Welcome to the September 18th, 2012 work session of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. We've got a couple of items to look through today. And the first item of discussion is a presentation of then and now in Bowling Green. Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. Brent Childers is here with us today to give you an overview of the 2010 census. He's made this presentation to a number of city groups and community groups, and we felt it had enough significance in it to brief you about what's going on with our community based on the numbers presented by the census. So I give you Brent.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissioners. As Kevin said, this is from the census, so I felt that the time was right to take that data and kind of pull it all together and see kind of where Bowling Green's at, where it's been, and kind of look to see what changes have occurred in the last 10 years and then how that's going to impact us in the future. So click and works. Bowling Green has historically served as the regional marketplace for about 15 counties. That's pretty much 10 counties in Kentucky and the five counties along the Kentucky-Tennessee border. That's been going on for decades. I don't really expect that to change. That's been driven by education, business, and then just an overall better quality of life. You know, that area, you're talking just under a half a million people. We'll talk about that more in a minute. But we'll go into where has Bowling Green been? So if you look at the picture on the left, you can see that's from approximately the late 1890s, somewhere around 1900. The picture to the right, let me try to turn this one on, is from, there we go, that's laughing.
Hey, that's great.
Is from the 1990s, 2000, somewhere in there, not really sure, but looking at the cars, that's kind of what it looks like. So Bowling Green's come a long place, but even in the picture to the left, there were still issues. There were still problems. I read a book this summer, Freakonomics, where it talked about the issues of that time in New York City were horse maneuver. It was before the vehicle, so everything was driven by horse. Every commercial truck, there was no commercial truck, but all commercial deliveries were driven by horse. So what do you do with that? So there were still problems there, just like we have problems today, and there will be problems in the future. That's what we're here for. We're here to solve those problems. So after looking at where Bowling Green's been, it's important to know where is it Sometimes we talk about signs, and sometimes we see signs, but do we really understand them? So I'm going to put a sign up here. I want you all to tell me what it tells you. What does it make you think of? And I have a feeling that a couple of you will have seen this sign before.
It means right now for me. I mean, right now.
I wonder what you meant by a couple of us have seen that before.
I didn't name any names, so.
Okay. The other four people are probably mad at you for that comment.
But you know what this means. You recognize it. You see it, you understand it. Now I want to show you another sign. I want you to tell me what this sign means to you.
It means I'm lost.
It means...
Where are you at?
Seat back is down on First and State.
First and State?
It's Middle East.
Middle East. Israel?
No.
Jerusalem.
Jerusalem. You see Jerusalem, Tel Aviv, Jericho. You're wandering around somewhere. It's probably important to know where you're going if you see that sign, given the nature of what's went on the last couple of weeks. You know, there's some things going on there. So it's important we see signs. Sometimes we see the sign and understand it, sometimes we just see a sign. So like I said, this is really about laying out the historic trends and kind of seeing how that will change over the future, how this affects us. There's three major factors that affect a city: population, income, and development. This is what really affects the viability. You can translate those into another thing: people, money, and investment. You've got to have people who want to live there, who want to stay there. They have to be able to make a living. They have to have a job. And then you have to have people who are willing to invest in your town to create more jobs, to create more opportunity, to create more income. Those are the three things that we'll focus on and different aspects of those. So the first one, population. If you look, the breaking point for Bowling Green was really somewhere in the 90s is when the population started to really take off. That's when everything kind of changed. From the 70s to the 90s, that's pretty flat. And from 80 to 90, I would actually classify that as a decrease because that's probably not even up with the birth rate over that period of time. And then you look at, from 90 to 2000, 2000 to 2010, you're talking about somewhere in the 18 percent of growth over that period of time, and that's quite a bit of growth. Now if you forecast that out, and you go over here to 2020, you're at about 68,000. You go out to 2030, you're at about 80,000. Now those are, now we're getting up into some big numbers. And keep in mind, these are pretty true numbers because the city really hasn't done a big annexation. You have some cities across the country that would just go out and take these huge swaths of developed property, and, you know, they kind of really skews their population growth. This is really just true growth, true internal growth. We're all familiar with this. You hear it a lot through the school systems. Bowling Green's home to nearly 30 different languages. Who can tell me what percentage of Bowling Green citizens were foreign-born in 1990? I'll take a guess.
Six.
Six? 6%? Any other guesses?
I'd say 10.
10 in 1990? One and a half.
Wow.
Oh, I was wrong.
I'll give you another chance. 2010. Same question, different year.
20.
20. 10.9. So what does that really mean? Means it went from 1 in 10 or 1 in 100 to 1 in 10. This number's already went up. If you look at some of the latest estimates that have come out from the statisticians, it's gone up to about 12. I don't know where that will maximize that, but that's a continually growing number. That's driven by two major groups: the International Center and Western. And within that, you have two different populations: refugees and students. Each of those populations require different services, different aspects, they interact with the city differently. Don't ever forget Western's motto: "Leading American University with International Reach." I don't expect them to stop doing what they're doing, and this is not to be bad, this is not to be mean, this is just to tell you this is what's going on out there. So we talk about diversity, talk about language. In 1990, only 3 percent of families spoke a language other than English. By 2010, it had grown to 13 and a half, 330 percent increase over that 20 years. Bowling Green's not what it was in 1990. So as I started going through, pulling all this information down, and we hear a lot about the growth of Western and what else has been going on, I found some other things interesting, but just the overall post-secondary growth. The little yellow bar down here is the tech school. And then over here, they're quite a bit larger. 173 percent growth in 10 years. Western undergraduate, 34 percent. Western graduate, 37 percent. Now this is total enrollment, and so it will include some of the satellite campuses, E-Town, Glasgow, Owensboro, things like that. I can't back those out because they count, you can double count. Somebody can go to class in Bowling Green during the day, take a night class in Glasgow, so they would be double counted. Total student population of around 23,000, I think, here in Bowling Green. My estimate is somewhere around the 20,000, 20 to 21,000 mark. It's quite an impact. They have to live somewhere, they have to work somewhere, they have to shop somewhere. That's an impact. Western, fastest-growing university in Kentucky for the last 14 years straight. I don't really expect it to slow down. We've seen it for a period of time. I think we'll continue to see it for a little bit of time. At any time, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me, otherwise I'll just keep going through. Something else I stumbled on was the age. At first, I saw Bowling Green's age has decreased two years, median age, two years, over a 20-year span. So I kind of first thought, well, what does that mean? What does, what are some other cities doing? So I went to Owensboro, which we often use as a comparison. Then you can see quite a bit of difference. They went up four years, and then you can see the gap between the age difference. Of course, we do have a university, a much larger university presence. So I thought, okay, I'll look at some other cities. These are three cities that I use frequently. Now Murfreesboro has kind of grown outside of our comparison in the last 10 years. They've had a huge population increase, but several years ago, we were right there. Universities were about the same size outside of a major city. That's how Tuscaloosa, Cape Girardeau is kind of similar. So that's why, that's why I've always used these type of cities. And you can see, we're kind of, we're getting younger while a lot of these are getting older. So then I wanted to look at a little closer comparison: the county. Overall, Warren County is at 32. So we're seeing the county get older while the city is getting younger over this period of time. Overall, in the last 10 years, Bowling Green's population's increased to 8,700, 8,711. I believe a large portion of that is for foreign-born residents and students. If you will look at some other information here in a second, that'll kind of explain where some of that comes from. So now we shift over to the second part: money, income. If you look at income numbers, I'll read them left to right. This orange color is Bowling Green. The yellow color is Warren County, and I can't back that out, so that Bowling Green is also included in that. The green is Kentucky, and then the purple, I'm calling that purple, is the US. Historically, this area's always been behind the US average. It's part of the South. That's nothing abnormal at all. However, what is interesting is looking at the change over time. Now, 2000, there were some, we had some pretty good years in between, in between here. So we've seen a lot of other places that have had decreases once you hit 2010 after the 2008 recession. That wasn't really alarming to me. What was more alarming was from 2000 to 2010, the city decreased, went down in per capita income 13 percent, while the county increased 3 percent. That's a 16 percent spread. The state fell 2 percent, and the US was flat. So while everybody else was pretty much flat or went down, the county goes up, we went way down. If you look at the difference between 1990 and 2010, $300 less for the city of Bowling Green, and these are inflation-adjusted. $300 less in per capita income over that 20-year period. Median family follows a similar trend, or median household, excuse me. Median household follows a similar trend. You can see where Bowling Green out here to the left has went down in 20 years. So I started to look at poverty. That's, that's an indicator also. And this is the percentage of population. So this way, I could kind of compare how a breakdown of your population goes. We'll start at the top. This is Bowling Green at the highest point. You get up here, it's about 28 percent of our population in 2010 lived below the poverty line. To give you an idea of the poverty line in 2010, and that's a national number, it's not separated by state or city or anything like that, that's a national number. Family of four, 25,000. The triangle, green one, this doesn't show up very well, that's Kentucky. US is pretty flat. Warren County had quite a spike between 1990 and 2000, but then flattened off. So if you look at the trends of this, they're all kind of grouped down here together. Bowling Green's up here, and we're trending up.
Warren Ca, excuse me, Brent. Warren County's, Bowling Green is a part of the Warren County on this one as well?
This one, no.
No, it's not on that?
No, because I was able to, if it's a whole number, then I can back them out. If it's already an analytical number, like a median and average, things like that, then I, then I can't back those out. I was able to take these from whole numbers and then calculate percentage. So this is actual individuals living in poverty, and you can see the actual spike of the increase over the last 10 years in the number of individuals, whereas the county flattened out. With all that being said, I still think Bowling Green's going to be a great job creator in the future. There's still going to be opportunities here. Major opportunities: financial, industrial, retail, service. That's where I see our growth actually being. These are higher-paying, these are lower-paying, but there's still going to be opportunity. We're not like a lot of places that don't have the ability to recruit, that don't have the ability to create investment.
Can you go back to that other slide? Did you look at the other cities? You talk about Tuscaloosa and Cape Girardeau, Murfreesboro. Did you look at those?
Not for this comparison. I can, but I did not for this comparison, no. So now we're talking about development or investment. This is where people are saying, I think that this is a nice enough place that I'm willing to put my money in here in return of making a profit. That's what we all want to see. We've had three strong development markets historically. Commercial, and I classify commercial as a business open to the public. It could be a bank, it could be a restaurant, it could be anything like that, something where the public would go in. Industrial is a business where it's mainly just employee or business traffic. You're going to have a few salesmen, things like that, but it's mainly just employee traffic. Your warehousing, assembly, manufacturing, those types of things. The residential, separate between homeowner and rental. Those are the kind of two there. We've had a very strong growth in commercial and industrial. I really don't go into much of here because it's kind of drives itself out there. Don't expect that to slow down. Like I said earlier, we have a labor market of about 460,000. Bowling Green's still the regional marketplace, so if you drive down Scottsville Road on a Friday night, you'll see how important the regional marketplace is. You can look at the license plates in the mall, you can see what all's going on at the restaurants, you kind of see where that comes from. However, residential's in transition, and we'll talk about the factors in a second, but we've had a limited single-family growth over the last several years and a very strong rental growth. We talked, first, we'll just talk about overall housing units. Overall, these are numbers that I want to see. I think these are good because you're seeing steady incremental growth over a period of time. After the financial crisis, what you saw was cities that had really strong, really high growth here, and then they had an oversupply. We've been able to grow incrementally. We've had stable vacancy rates. They've hovered around 8, 9 percent over the last 30, 20 years. So that creates a good balance between supply and demand, supply and demand, so we don't get out of whack on things. Now, when you look at the actual breakdown of those housing units, it's where things start to change. You go back to 1990, we were almost 50/50 between homeownership, or owner-occupied, as they're called in the census, and renter-occupied. By 2000, you start to see the break. By 2010, you see it wide open. In the last two years, we've permitted 765 multifamily units and 200 single-family units. Of those 200, we know a portion were built to rent. We just don't have a tracking process for me to know what that number is. So as this has spread, it's continuing to spread, and you can see this number flatten out.
Is that that surprising since our median age is going down?
No. Wasn't surprised a bit. There's some other factors that go into that that we'll talk about, but no, I wasn't surprised at it. And this is not to be surprising, or this is not to be, you know, to fear less than either. This is just to say, this is what's going on out there. This is what's going on in our community. I believe that this affects some of the things that we do. I started this process back in February, pulling in all the data, putting it all together, and then kind of doing this along with a plan for my department to kind of change how we do things based on the changing dynamics of the city. So we're, this is for me, more of an information so that we can make sure that we're targeting our resources. This is the actual population between the two types, owner and renter, and you can see the population change in the owner, only increased 4 percent. Renter, 32 percent.
How does this compare to the national average or state? Have you compared at all?
Well, it's really hard to compare to a national average because being a university town, it's really better to compare to university towns. University towns historically have a little higher renter, but we were a university town 20 years ago, too, and we were at 50/50. Now, we are following some national trends, and I'll talk about that in a second on the rental growth. Going back just one second, I talked about in the last two years, the amount of, that pin's dead, the amount of growth between 2010, 2012. We expect another 150 to 200 multifamily units to come on. So that's what I talked about in the future. We expect this, this to continue. This is one part that was a little interesting. From 2000 to 2010, we've permitted 700 new single-family homes. This was part of a high development, high construction growth for the city. You had a lot of fieldstone farms, deer park, what is it, deer, out by the water parks, some of those areas that really developed during this time. However, the overall net increase in owner-occupied was only 169. So even though we built 700, the overall increase was only 169. So what that tells me is we had a lot of existing housing stock that went from owner-occupied to renter-occupied. Now where that changes is that has an effect on your actual neighborhood. Your neighborhoods begin to transition. We've seen this for a long time on the West Side, where somebody dies out, somebody else comes and buys the house, rents it. Now we're seeing that migrate across the bypass into some other areas, and that has effects on the neighborhood. That neighborhood's not what it was 20 years ago, 25 years ago. We see this more whenever there is, the house is not strong enough to sell. If it's a strong enough house to sell on the open market, they'll sell it, put it out, list it, and move on. If it's, if it's an older home, if it's something that they just can't put out there to sell, it's not that strong, you see a lot of auction. Auctions are intimidating for first-time homebuyers, the people that would be in the market for that house, but they're very comfortable for investors, real estate people, landlords, that, that type of thing. So you're starting to see that transition, we start to see it pop up here and there. In 2010, we still had 2,100 elderly people living alone, so I don't expect that to slow down. It's just going to depend on where that specific house is. It's a case-by-case basis, there's really no way to track it. I tried to find auction data to see what I could find, and I couldn't find anything. The rental future, this is what I talk about, the national trends. This will continue until we see a few things change. After the economic crisis, mortgage lending changed. It's more difficult now to get a loan, so you're seeing not as many people buy homes. If you do, then you have to have some other things with you, either cash or some type of other assistance. The money's not as free-flowing as it was. That could be a good thing, but it's just not. We also have a strong housing market in the county, homeowner. They've got a lot of opportunity, a lot of diversity among housing stock, and you see two completely different construction markets between the city and the county. The county is all residential, all single-family for the most part. We are more multifamily commercial, so you're really seeing a break there. And also a generational preference, and this is part of the national trend that I was talking about. I've talked to a couple of local apartment developers, and they say that the two main groups that are taking these apartments are the millennials, which is the age group younger than me, that just got out of college, can't find the job, can't get this, they're not in the position to buy the house. And then you have the baby boomer population that doesn't want the upkeep of a house, doesn't want the cost, doesn't want the headache, doesn't want all that. They just want to have a decent place to live, and they're willing to move into an apartment or rent something so that they don't have the issues. And then the post-secondary growth. Whenever you're in college, you're in tech school, or just out, you're not in the position to buy a house. It's very difficult. You're working part-time, you're going to school, or you're just getting on your feet, you're just trying to get started, you're just trying to get your money saved up. We've got that increase in students, they have to live somewhere, and they don't have the opportunity to really buy a home, but they still want to be close. They want to live in the city, they want to be close to campus, those types of things. So for the future, Kentucky will continue to be the marketplace for business, education, medicine. Still come here, people still come here to work, still come here to learn, they still come here to get healthy. We've pretty much got the regional hospitals, the regional university, and we're the regional business center. However, the things that impact us in the future: the diverse population. Now, we're working on that. We've got Lada to assist us on that, and she's been doing trainings, training the staff, and working with the international population so that we can learn how to do that. The drops in income levels for becoming a poorer city. That changes some of the things that we need to do. That changes some of the services that we provide. We need to be aware of that. The post-secondary enrollment, as more students, more students create other problems, other issues that we have to have resolutions for. That's what we have to work on. Rental units, increase in rental, we need to see how this neighborhood transition affects what we do. We see it quite a bit whenever the person passes away and then four college kids move into the house. And now the lady on the corner, who has had the same neighbors for the last 30 years, does not want to see college kids living there. Those are issues that we have to deal with. And then the sufficient developable land. Bowling Green's going to continue to be a strong marketplace for commerce, education, business. We need to make sure that we have the opportunity to grow. We're, it's going to happen, we're going to, we're just going to have to make sure that we're prepared for it. And that concludes my part. If you have any questions, or if you have any questions tomorrow that kind of sinks in to you, feel free to contact me. But if there's nothing, I'll sit down and I'll turn it back over to Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Childers. Next, we have on the agenda our economic development, annexation, and Senate policy.
Yo, Adrian.
I think Brent Childers' presentation was an excellent entree into what I'd like to talk to you about now. It's also a comment on Brent's presentation. It's good to know that, I think this commission and your staff has realized some of the challenges we face with the diverse population and our discussions about how we make sure we have enough developable land. So we are aware of these problems. The International Officer was something that we added because we knew the demographic of our community was changing, and we needed to serve all citizens. One of the goals, I think, of this city commission or any deliberative body is to deal with the future and prepare ourselves well for the future. Question is, how do we do that? And what way do we do that? This past year, as the commission knows, we passed the comprehensive plan that laid out the parameters for our community, for, I think, for a window of the next 20 years. What's significant about this comprehensive plan, many of the changes related to changes that were occurring in the county and not necessarily in the city. I think it also showed that, what Brent didn't tell you is that the county is growing at a much faster rate, population-wise, than the city is growing. And it's also, as he mentioned, most of the residential development in Warren County, including Bowling Green, single-family residential development is occurring outside of the community in Warren County itself. As Brent correctly identified, we are becoming more and more a community of renters, which is not good or bad, it just presents different challenges. As we all know, we want to deal with gross, growth, and we want to deal with it properly. One of the things I think we need to be aware of is, as Brent said, reading sign. And the latest 2010 figures show that the demographics of our community are changing. Reading sign shows to a community that, not today, not tomorrow, but the first signs of us becoming, believe it or not, a mature community. One that has no place to grow. And all around us, growth is occurring. I happened to work in three communities in my career that were mature communities. And the reason they became mature communities is because they could not annex either by law or by desire. And what happened was the people moved outside of those communities and left those remaining to either suffer decreased services or just a continued increase of taxes, neither which we will do or want to do here in Bowling Green. The lack of residential opportunities in the community, although it's desirable to give residents choice, in our mind, or at least my mind, I don't think is that critical. What is critical is the fact that we have areas that we can grow to create jobs, developable areas in our community, to create... areas in, in our community, to create commerce, economic development, and jobs. Over the last couple of years, we've talked generally about how to use the tool of annexation to do that. We talked mostly about the parameters of annexation from the point of view, we don't want to do what's called linear annexation, to go out miles from the base of our community to pick up some development, then find ourselves three years having to build a $4 million firehouse because we can't meet the five-minute response. We also, at the last retreat, you directed staff to look at the concept of targeted annexation of certain areas which we feel could be used for future annexation. Again, to make sure that we do not become a mature community that has nowhere to go. Kate, can we put that map up? Can you blow that up a little bit? Thanks. If you look at the map and look at the policy that we have proffered for your consideration, we have identified what we believe to be the five areas contiguous to the city of Bowling Green that we believe represent the greatest opportunity for economic development and/or job creation in the future. Those areas are Area 1, Area 2, Area 3, Area 4, and Area 5. I think I have given you some of the detail of those areas, but generally, from our staff point of view, they represent, which we feel have the greatest chance for economic development. And they also, also have to their advantage that there's limited residential development in these areas, as well as we can reach these areas with our existing fire response in our police department and do not create an additional burden. If you look at these five areas, one could make the cogent argument that we will naturally grow to these areas and jobs someday will be created. That is possibly true. But there's also a chance that, as we see by the Nature Parkway and some of the subdivisions that have occurred there, that our, our path to the, some of these areas could be, or already have been blocked by development that has occurred in the county. So we thought it was important to incent residents or property owners in these five areas and recommended to you some incentives that we feel would be helpful in convincing or enticing property owners to make the decision to come into the city now. If you look at your proposal, and Mike's going to tag-team with me about the proposal and about the various incentives, but generally, it, we are offering to the property owners in this area an opportunity to receive a rebate on their property tax that they would pay for a five-year period. The five years that they could be selected, could be selected now or any five-year period once the area comes into the city. For example, if one of these areas would develop for economic development and create jobs, commerce, manufacturing, that property tax rate could be based on that manufacturing rate, along with, it's in a five-year window. But we are, are willing to incent this, to convince or help property owners to come into the city. Figuring that if we're going to provide living space and have an area to grow, we need to be aggressive and essentially give to get. Some would say this is not a big give. We would counter that, that yes, property taxes aren't that large, but we're also willing to provide services to these areas with essentially no cost to the property owner. That would becomes significant if the area should develop within that five-year window and move from a rural classification to another classification. The hinge point of all this is, has been the seminal issue that we've all dealt with ever since we started our discussions about annexation. Do we do non-consensual annexation? Our track record about that is modeled at best. From what Mike tells me, we have used it twice when there was, I think on Cave Mill, correct? And another time on Cedar Ridge? Cedarwood, excuse me, to annex area. In the case of Cedarwood, 26 out of 27 property owners agreed to come in. We only had one who didn't agree, and in that case, we agreed to do non-consensual annexation, as well as in Cave Mill and Massey Spring Development. I think we had one holdout. On Greenwood Lane, for example, we currently have in the city, the Greenwood Road itself and take care of all the responsibility of that road, but we do not have the residents along that road, and they're in the county. So we pay the expenses without getting the revenue. Under current state law, 55% is the trigger point. We have, are offering that, and based on our discussion with you at retreat, that we increased that to two-thirds, or 67%. Put it simply, if less than two-thirds or 67% of the people in this area would not want to be annexed, we wouldn't bring that forward to the commission for annexation. But if two-thirds agree to be annexed, we would bring it forward and ask you to consider annexation of that area. I understand, and we understand that this is, is a hard decision, but we wouldn't present this unless there, in our mind, was a need to create a, a place for us to grow. It would, if we become a mature community, that will be very problematic for us. And this is not to provide a great benefit to you all sitting there now or to residents now. Right now, we're achieving, as Jeff can tell you, a tactical balance between the amount of revenues that we're receiving and the amount that's going out. But that's becoming increasingly perilous because, as you know, we have not raised property tax. Today, we're again not going to raise property tax. And we have used our occupational tax to incent community development with the TIF, the ballpark, economic development with the JDI-P giving up 1% of the 1.85 with the, the trans park and, and helping to cover the debt there. So our occupation tax is under constant stress. Right now, it's in balance, but that could change, especially if you have another recession, especially if the CERS rates occur. So this is a calculated risk. We felt it was important to identify for you all those areas which we felt would be most likely to be developed and to offer an incentive and not leave it to chance so that in the future, future generations and future city commissions would have a place to grow. As we all know, we're involved in economic development. We have a number of places now, but they're slowly becoming filled, and the probability of those being filled in the next decade is pretty strong. If good things happen, then we always have to have a place to go. Mike, you want to speak about the five areas, please?
Good afternoon. In working on this process over the last few years, Employee Management Team Committee actually started looking at annexation several years ago, and we identified several areas around the city that we felt would become part of an urban growth boundary. We had expected the comprehensive plan to help address future growth. It didn't quite end up the way I expected, so we kind of backed up and said, where are the areas that we think are more likely that development will occur? Again, following the parameters, as the city manager stated, we don't want to go linearly, but rather to look at infill adjacent to the city limits and where we know that the development is going to occur. Working clockwise in the southwest, Area 1, which is centered on Memphis Junction, a good part of that area is vacant, a large farm. It is completely surrounded by the city on at least the south and east and partially to the north. In the north, it's not, is residential, again, probably not likely it would ever come into the city. To the northwest, Area 2, along Veterans Memorial, again, just filling in to a very good man-made boundary of, of Veterans Memorial. Also filling in, south of Morgantown Road, most of that property is, is surrounded by the city on three sides. Don't really know how that will develop, but again, since it is central to the city to include it. Northeast, the area along Louisville Road or the railroad and also the interstate, of course, that's adjacent to the trans park. A lot of vacant land there. The connector from the interstate eventually will run through that area, going up to Commonwealth Boulevard. So again, a lot of prime opportunity for industrial development. Area 4 is centered on Lover's Lane, obviously surrounded by the city on at least a couple of sides, between Lover's Lane and the interstate. And then to the southeast, Area 5, centered on Nature Parkway, Greenwood Lane, east of the interstate. Again, as the city manager mentioned, we've already got properties there completely surrounded by the city. We know eventually that the area south of Gander Mountain will develop potentially, commercially. So those are the areas adjacent to the city we think are most likely for upcoming development that has a significant amount of vacant land that we would be able to annex, particularly if we have owner participation and cooperation.
This is not to say that, that the city wouldn't welcome annexation requests, ad hoc annexation requests from either certain enclaves that are currently not in the city or from, or special project type of annexation, but at the last retreat, you asked us to think outside the box, and this is what we thought outside the box on it. So we don't know how you want to proceed, but these are the ideas that we had. And again, it's to provide growth areas because we don't want to find ourselves a decade or a couple decades from now, a mature community and having no money to provide services. So this is the motivation behind this recommendation.
Kevin, you mentioned that on some of the areas that are not currently in the city, but we are providing services to. I think you mentioned Greenwood and Lane. I'm looking at the map we have, and I think it's hard to see on the slide because it's not gray, but looking at Area 1, right above Area 1 on my map, that is white, not gray, so I'm assuming that is not in the city limits. Is that correct?
Mike and I purposely divided this because I, I don't know the community that well, and I, I can't see that well, so Mike's going to...
Okay, that's fine. I think it's hard to see on this slide, so...
Yes, that is, that's residential, that's, I think, called University Estates off of Russellville Road.
Okay, do we provide services to that area?
No, not that area, but there are streets such as Memphis Junction Road and Greenwood Lane because we have houses or we have property on one or the other side of the street. We are providing some services like streetlights, but no, we are not providing police and fire protection to that neighborhood.
Okay. And I'm just kind of looking at the areas on this map, boss. If you kind of go to the right, if we're still in Area 1, right above it, it's not gray. And then up a little to the right, between Campbell Lane and Nature, I'm just kind of looking at the areas that are in the middle of the gray that are...
Mitchell Heights.
Okay, it's Mitchell Heights. So do we provide, do we provide services to any of these areas that are currently not gray?
No. What you'll find is on some of the, the streets, like Small House Road, where we've got streetlights on one side of the street because one side is city and the other side is not. But no, we're not providing police and fire protection or other city services to the areas in white. There's, there's one or two exceptions because the street, like Greenwood Lane, might be in the city where we're providing streetlights or some, you know, street resurfacing, but we're not providing services to the residents there.
Other than, other than mutual response agreements.
Yeah, that's what I was going to get into. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, because we did respond, I understand, a few months ago to the field fire, for example, that was just outside city limits. But those are based upon requests from the county fire department, that they think they have a fire that's beyond their capability or they need assistance. They can, but same thing goes with us. If I'm mistaken, a few years ago, we had First Baptist Church Fire, I think two or three of the, of the volunteer fire departments may have come down here and provided assistance as well. So we do have mutual assistance agreements. They've requested, we will go in. One example, not mutual assistance, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think a few years ago, somebody called in a wrong address on a, shows you how bad it is, Small House Road, Cave Mill. Somebody sparked a fire, called it in, called in, addressed it, everybody thought it was in the city because it was somebody with the cell phone, I think in a car. The house ended up being in the county. The city responded, you know, they didn't get there and whip that's in county and drive away. They responded and did it, but that shows some of the issues here, particularly like Lover's Lane and Cave Mill, Small House. You know, some of these areas are, you know, I, I can't tell you. I can drive down Small House, and I can't tell you driving down. Okay, that's on the left, Mitchell Heights, that's out. On the right, somewhere it's in. We'll get another point on both sides, somewhere it's in, somewhere it's not. It's, particularly on some roads, just difficult, but we do have mutual response agreements.
Do we track, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we track the number of mutual aid requests that we receive, and do we track that number based upon the amount of estimated cost that we had to the city residents to be able to respond? For example, the field fire had a cost to the city residents when we went out. And I'm, I'm in no way suggesting that we not provide mutual aid. I think it's beneficial, but do we track the, the number of firefighters we sent out there? Do we track the number of hours that those firefighters were out there? Do we track wear and tear on equipment so that we can better estimate what mutual aid is, is costing the taxpayer?
I'm sure we track mutual aid, but do we break it down to how much we gave versus what we get? I'm not sure of that because the whole nature of mutual aid is that when somebody needs, we give, and when we need, they give. I can check with Greg to find out, you know, if we do that, but...
I think it would just be an interesting number. From the standpoint that, you know, the last time we talked about this, I, I got myself in a lot of trouble by talking about people who are, are receiving the benefit of city tax dollars. And I understand that we have an occupational tax, and therefore, we don't know where people live and, and things, but I, I think that it's important when we start having discussions like we did over, across the street from, from Mitchell Heights. Help me, Mike?
Cedarwood.
Cedarwood, the Cedarwood area. To be able to have an educated conversation with people when we talk about annexation, because I think one of the things people automatically think is, this is going to cost me more money and I don't want it. But I think when we can start to break it down to say, here's what you're going to receive in exchange for the more money that you're going to put in, that at, at least in the Cedarwood area, and talking to people following that, it wasn't the big bad government knocking on their door and, and selling them a bill of goods. In the end, it, it's turned out to be very beneficial for people who live in that area. And I think mutual aid is one of those things that plays into that because if you're a county island within the city, and if you know that the fire, if your fire department, because it's a county fire department, it's a volunteer, is a considerable ways away from where you may be, but they can call on mutual aid, then your incentive to become a city resident is diminished because you know that you're going to have somebody who's going to come, no.
But on mutual aid, they do not respond until one of their people are onsite and determine that they can't handle or need assistance.
And, and I get that, but, but, but here's the tricky thing about the mutual aid, because I, I agree with the mayor, is you could have one person who responds in a mutual aid situation, who's a volunteer firefighter, who, let's say, he was at the mall and he shoots over to... a volunteer firefighter, who, let's say he was at the mall, and he shoots over to Mitchell Heights, and he can make a call at that point to the chief of the volunteer fire department, who then can call in mutual aid, correct?
Theoretically, yes, but that's not how they operate.
I understand that, but, but, but there's less of a selling point. I mean, we could talk in theory or we could talk in reality, and the reality is if you have one officer, one firefighter who arrives on scene and makes a call to the chief and says, this is, this is bad, how close are the trucks? He or she can then make the call for mutual aid. That costs somebody money. And all I'm looking for is, what is that amount and what is our selling point to draw people into an annex situation?
I can have Greg do the grass fire. I'm sure he has statistics on, on the grass fire on the Fourth of July weekend, was it?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
From a staff point of view, maybe with you all too, we have kind of given up the desire to try to close the islands. People are, if they wanted to be in, they would have asked a long time ago. Last retreat, Mike shared with you a little mini-study he did, and it's residential development is, is close to the amount of property taxes that we get. It's not a great incentive to do it. On the other hand, economic development areas that can produce jobs, commerce, and protect our finances in the future, we thought were, we should focus on. Now, these areas here, just what we staff thought were areas, we're open to any other ideas, or you can add to this or detract from it. We just wanted to put the model out there for you to consider. We felt that we had to give to get and not leave it up to the vagaries of time and accident to whether or not we had place for jobs to go in the community. That was what drove us.
Mr. Jennings next. Go ahead. Joe?
I didn't quite understand Melinda's answer here pertaining to area one. Are we saying we're not interested in asking those people there, Mike, if they are interested in coming into the city?
If you're talking the green area one, yes. If you're talking the residential area, University Estates north of it, if we find any interest in that neighborhood and coming in, we would work with them. As, as you all know, when Edward Drive, Cedarwood initiated the annexation, they had the bulk of the people on the street already signed up. All I had to do was go in and talk to another 10 to 12 people to get them to agree. On the other hand, where we don't have interest coming from the neighborhood, it's very difficult. When I approached a dozen houses on Memphis Junction, the little stub there next to Russellville Road where there's about a dozen houses, I got no response, no interest, even giving them the information on, here's all your taxes are going to be. You won't be paying these kinds of taxes anymore. Here's what you're going to get. Of course, they already have streetlights by virtue of the other side of the street having streetlights, so that wasn't a selling point. I approached Greenwood Lane after we decided to annex the street, or around that time, approached again about a dozen properties there. I got about maybe 25% willing to come in. The others didn't say no, but they didn't sign the consent either, so that would mean some additional work to go after them. The area to the little area that's not annexed just to the west of Cedarwood, that's on Meadow Wood, Cheyenne, those streets. Again, I tried to get them after Cedarwood and Edward. I got, again, about a 20% interest there. So if you don't have someone in the neighborhood kind of starting the ball rolling, it's difficult to get anywhere close to 50%. But if they're, if they show interest to us, we'll go there. Years ago, Karen Foley, probably had first started her job, somebody in Mitchell Heights made the mistake of saying, we're interested in being annexed. So the city trumped out there and did their little dog and pony show, and the people in Mitchell Heights got real upset when the city started talking annexation, even though we were invited to go out there, because most of them just weren't interested.
And that person lived in the second or third house?
That we couldn't touch them.
And we couldn't touch them.
And that's too, we had, like I said, we had maybe 20% interest, but we don't want to go picking houses here and there. We want a whole street. It's very difficult for police, fire, also for public works, if we don't have, you know, an entire street. So, you know, we could have picked up a few more houses here and there, but it's too confusing for everybody to do that.
And let me follow up on Slim's question, too. Isn't it a little more difficult today for us to ask someone to come in because of what is already available to them? You know, a few years back, they didn't have sheriff protection, of course, they had state police, they didn't have the Warren County Water Service, and all of those things that some of them have now. I guess my concern is, what is our selling point to ask them to come in? These incentives, it would appear to me, have to be real good incentives for a period of time, because when you talk about the amenities that weren't available many years ago, they are available to them now.
Well, for the vacant property that we're hoping would develop, commercial or industrial, obviously fire protection is the big sell, as well as law enforcement, even though there is a county sheriff's department, state police. Our police department has many more people on shift at any one time. And also because of the incentive package that the city manager is proposing, we could wait until that property develops and then rebate property taxes, obviously worth at a much higher level than what it is now. The property taxes on agricultural property is basically zero. So there's no incentive for them to come now and leave at agriculture, but if, within the next five years, they plan to develop that property, and that property becomes a multimillion dollar operation, the property taxes are now worth a considerable amount of money, then there's, then there's obviously the incentive. We have a list of services the city provides, and we provide that when anyone, we talk to someone about annexation, all the way from police fire protection, the potential of a lower, you know, fire insurance rate, leaf pickup, the street services that we provide, obviously, streetlights. There's two pages of different services that we provide information on for anyone wanting to come into the city. But you're right, a lot of times, people look at the bottom line and, you know, what is the additional taxes I'm going to pay?
Would you email that list to us all?
Sure. And I also, in the particular neighborhoods where actually I was attempting to get them, I actually, you know, took their tax bill, said, here's the assessed value, here's what you're going to pay in city taxes. In the event of Edward Drive, they were paying for their own streetlights, so they saved about $50 a year on the street lighting, since the city took that over. You know, the county has some taxes that are specific to the area, like, or like fire service, that they no longer would have to pay. So actually, we'd take that off and show them, here's your net cost. But yes, be glad to send you kind of our list of services that we described.
My issue, I guess, obviously has to do with the non-consensual part of this. The incentives, as Kevin, as we've already talked, really do like that, in having people make that decision. The non-consensual is what, what I would have a problem with. Which brings me to another question. Let's say that we do annex the property in, at which point, we've annexed it in for a certain purpose as a city. Where does condemnation then, the issue come in at all?
Pardon?
And I know it doesn't on the surface, but obviously, we're bringing them in for a purpose, and this commissioner said that we wouldn't condemn for economic development. Is that right?
We can't condemn for economic development.
Okay, so we can't do that. So they're in the city, but they still would not have to sell, and we would not, as a body, or at least the members here, would not condemn.
We separate the issue of condemnation from annexation. We think they're totally different. We're buying, or hopefully buying, opportunity for the future. Whether this land would ever become economic development land, we're not sure, and we're not recommending condemnation. We're just incenting, because if we don't do it now, again, we're leaving it to the vagaries of market, time, accident. And one of my favorite maps, and maybe you do too, if the camera will shift to the back, is that annexation map there. I read that, or every time I'm in this room, I'm fascinated by that map. That's the annexation history of Bowling Green right there, that map back there. And if you look at that small dot there at the bottom, that's what Bowling Green used to be like. And if you look at the one way at the bottom, that's as we progress. This is the annexation history of Bowling Green. Now imagine that this current map becomes it. We don't have these five areas. Eventually, we're going to become mature. We're not going to be able to grow. We're going to be boxed in by residential development or other development in the county. And as you all mentioned, there's already water, shore, sheriff. The thing we have right now is opportunity, because most of these are undeveloped, and they're rural, but there's an opportunity. If we get into the city now, we can hope that they'll transition for economic development or commerce. And we need that for our occupation.
And I know I've said the bad word with condemnation here, and I understand that. I understand the mature community part. Our BGMU is, obviously has issues with becoming a mature community as well, which is a separate issue with city government.
Right.
Right?
And the school system as well.
And the school system as well. I guess where I'm, would have, again, difficulty with the non-consensual goes back to one of the basic rights we have is property ownership. And again, I like the incentives. I think being aggressive doing that is good, but I still, I'm still having a problem with the non-consensual and say that it's over a certain percentage that we, that I, a member of this board, would just blanketly say that I would be for annexation, and I don't think I would.
The reciprocal of that, and maybe you've already done it, is that we have to be willing to accept that one person can stop a project. And you all didn't let that happen with Massey, right, or with Cedarwood?
When were those two?
You weren't on the board.
That's what I was gonna say.
Maybe you weren't. The opposite of that, if it's not 67, 66%, what if 99%?
Can I give another example to you? We need to go back and check historically. I'm not too sure ITA was not non-consensual. I'm not too sure all the ITA annexation was consensual.
I'm sure it wasn't.
And it goes back to what Kevin said. With a non-consensual issue, one property owner could have stopped the annexation for ITA.
How did it work with Cedarwood, just out of my ignorance? How did it work with, you said 26 out of 27? Had the 27th person not come in there, we would not have annexed.
Well, we can still annex, you know, what we have to do then is, what we do is notify the property owner that you have the right to initiate a petition to stop annexation. Then they have to go through a legal process, and if they get enough votes, I mean, if they get enough on their petition, then it actually goes to an election. And that area, the owners or the voters of that area, get to vote on whether they want to be annexed or not. So if we know we have two-thirds supporting us, they, you know, the people that are opposed can still start a petition and have a vote on it. And of course, if the two-thirds hold true, or even if 55% hold true, it would be annexed. We're just trying to make sure that we come to you with a comfortable number. We don't want to come to you with 50% saying they're willing to be annexed, knowing you're not going to go with the 50%. But if we know we've got two-thirds interested, we know that would probably win in an election, you know, if all those owners held true, if it actually went to a vote, where they actually had to vote in an election on it. But if you had said, no, we won't go forward unless we have 100%, we would not have brought the whole street of Cedarwood in. We wouldn't have brought in, we probably would have, you probably would have annexed Massey Springs itself, but we wouldn't have brought any of the other houses next to it.
You agree with what I'm saying?
So the issue of not bringing it all in, then the presumption that it would stop a project is not necessarily accurate. It could make the project more difficult.
True.
But it may not stop the project. I go back to property owner's rights to, to do what they feel best is for their property. And again, I go for the third time, say, given incentives is good, I'm just having a problem with the, and I'm, I'm not sure what anybody else feels. I'm still, I still have a problem with the non-consensual and just having a blanket policy saying, we'll do it if it's over 66%.
There's an efficiency. Now imagine this area three. Now imagine, one house in, one house out, one house in, two houses in. All of a sudden, our police department is trying to provide services that looks like a fence with pickets missing. I mean, this is all design. We had figured that there always has to be some benchmark. If ain't 67, that's a pretty good majority, that's two-thirds.
Yeah.
And we thought that we, that's why the residential wasn't even tried, because we didn't think that, given the intimacy of annexation, even though we provide a good product at a good value, it was too difficult to lift. And it doesn't pay for itself. We thought that the economic development was enough incentive.
I guess incentives, again, good, but I think that the problems associated with one house not coming in, I think private property owner's rights trump that. Now again, will it? I don't know. I guess I'm having the problem with just a blanket policy doing it and not looking at the projects individually.
The 66% only means that it would be brought to the city commission for a vote.
Correct.
It doesn't mean that it's, that we're making a decision today about 66% that will, that will affect something 10 years down the road. It just means that...
Give staff some guidance about how to approach.
66% means they would bring it to whoever sits in these five seats.
Absolutely.
And those five people then can make a decision.
And you'll get, and you'll get to vote on it four times.
You have two ordinances. You have one ordinance that's the intention to annex, you wait 60 days after a second reading of that ordinance to allow time for the residents to file a petition if they so choose, and get the adequate number of signatures for it. If there is no petition filed within that 60 days, then you proceed with the second ordinance to finally annex that property, which also takes the two readings. So you have four votes on it.
And I think that's a good point, as far as giving staff some direction. And I'll have to think on it some more. However, probably with what I've said, if I'm sitting in this seat, may not be, but if I am, I think you know where I would go with that. The idea of giving staff some direction and some guidelines to hit is probably okay. But again, I think we had to tread very lightly on this issue.
We, ma'am, we've talked a lot about it, a lot of different issues here, and one is, it's not just these five people on the condemnation issue. The Board of Commissioners previously passed municipal order, or was it?
Ordinance.
Ordinance that would prevent anybody from, any five people from sitting in these seats and using condemnation as a way to do economic development, unless first, there was a majority of the board that agreed to undo that ordinance. Annexation, pardon me?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Annexation, to me, is completely different than condemnation. When you're talking about condemnation, you're talking about acquiring people's land for a price. In this particular case, what you're, what you're asking them to do is to come in and be a part of the city, and in exchange, they're going to receive services, but they still retain ownership of their land for as long as they, as they want to. And then the last point is, I can hear some people in the community that are going to groan when I say this, but I believe in personal property rights, too, as well. But I also think that the idea that you own a piece of land and you therefore can do anything that you want with it is really an idea whose time passed a long time ago. Whether you live in the city or whether you live in the county, we have zoning regulations about what can be built. We have burn regulations on what can be burnt. There are all kinds of things. That's not to say that you can't do what it is that you want with, with personal property, because I believe in many instances, you can. There may be hoops that have to be jumped through in order to be able to do it, but in this case, I agree that we need to tread lightly, but at the same time, I think that there's an exchange that goes on in this case, where in other cases, where... where in other cases, we're acquiring property and we're giving people an amount of money and asking them to politely go away, when this, to me, seems to be a much different issue. And what do we do if we don't continue to grow? I mean, the very people that oppose annexation, if the road that led to their house, that benefits from city tax dollars, is to break down and become filled with potholes, I assure you, they're going to come forward and ask the city to fix that road, because they're going to say the city owns it. Well, in the end, the city doesn't own anything. We only, the taxpayers own it, and the people who contribute own it. And it's why I think, again, treading lightly makes sense, incentives make sense. But we have to continue to grow. Otherwise, we're going to end up like other communities. We're not going to survive recessions like we've survived this past recession as well.
If I could follow up real quick on what you said. I'm going to make sure we're not getting confused here. Annexation and condemnation are not the same.
Are two different things.
I mean, I think what staff did, they pointed out these five areas, and I won't use the word speculation, but that's where the staff thinks that the major growth for commercial and industrial development will occur on the fringes of the city. These are already on the fringes of the city now. Most logical places they're going to go. This will be private development-driven stuff. We may provide incentives to them to get them there, but this is going to be private developers doing this, not the city. And go back on what you said, and make sure everybody understands, we are controlled by Kentucky Supreme Court case that says, "We cannot condemn for economic development purposes." Not just the ordinance. You know, in Kentucky, you cannot condemn for economic development purposes, with one exception, and that's a Chapter 99 urban redevelopment plan we have downtown that we've not used. But that's the only exception. We cannot use condemnation for any of those green areas. It just simply will not fit. So I want to make sure everybody, I don't want to see a story about condemnation here. That, you know, this is a totally different issue, and we can't use that in those green areas.
Or the white areas.
And with all due respect, and again, it may be the minority opinion, although I think all of us are well aware of what a mature community means. And if we can provide those incentives, and we can provide that property owner with reasons for coming in, that's part of our duty, to provide those incentives, to provide, "This is why you should," then I think that's good. But again, when you go in and you annex property, you're still going to raise somebody's taxes. And again, the benefit cost analysis may be better. But I'd still say that we have to watch what we do when we tell people what to do with their property. And I think you made a great point about, we do have zoning laws. We do have all sorts of issues that people have to abide by. But again, raising someone's, the potential of raising their taxes and then not having any choice over that part on their piece of property, I think. Again, property is something that's pretty sacred. And that's just how I feel about it. Whether it's right or wrong, that's how I feel about it.
Mr. Jennings?
Yeah, what I was going to say, I've been talking too long. Let's see.
Can I ask another question while you're thinking of that? Do you have, most of these areas are identified or zoned as agriculture. And the tax rate on property is 20.6 cents per hundred, which for $100,000 valued property is $206 a year. Agriculture is 1.5 cent per hundred.
And we want to call Jeff up here to talk.
But there is an agriculture exemption which already addresses that.
And it does not have to be zoned agriculture to get that exemption.
That's correct.
We have, we learned yesterday that we have some prime development land here in town, that because they still have 10 acres or more of undeveloped land, are taking advantage of the agriculture exemption. And we may want to talk to you some point, because, well, maybe we won't. But we, you know, that rate, some of these places are getting what we may call a double dip, because the PVA, and let's make up a number. The PVA, there may be a commercial subdivision out here that has three buildings on it, but they've got 20 acres left.
Can I interrupt you there? I don't want to go off on that tangent. If you don't care, I'd rather talk about on the annexation part of it, on agriculture exemption on areas that are undeveloped, they start off at a much lower assessed value to begin with.
Yeah, well, he assesses them twice, until they start developing.
Let me jump in here real quick. I got to run just a few minutes. The ag exemption, after talking to Mr. Branstad yesterday, the ag exemption would just carry over from the county to the annex. We would accept their assessment. I think that's what we're interpreting. I think we have to, per KRS. So that ag exemption carries over to the annex. We take the net taxable value after that ag exemption, and you might be looking at 30 bucks.
$30 a year, so.
So it really doesn't hurt them.
Until it becomes developed.
Well, they could not, let me give you a scenario. They could not develop it for five years. The fifth or sixth year, they decide they're going to develop it. They get another five years before we ever really start taxing it full value. So you really could be looking at a potential 10-year period before the full development hits at the full real estate rate.
If that's ten years, we would have taken in $300.
Possibly. I really don't see it hurting anybody.
In the long run, taking a long-term view of that, the incentive that we provide will help for the city.
And that is where you don't have the non-consensual. Hopefully, that's where the person will make the business decision and say, "I would like to be annexed."
This is about urging people to do it now instead of 10 years from now. We would like them in the city now. So at least they're here. They may not develop for a while, but at least they're here. And we're trying to incent that to get them here now. We know out there by Gander Mountain, that's going to be developed. We're saying essentially to the developer, "Why don't you think about it now?" And we can help out a little bit, because things could change. There could be vagaries that stop that from being in the city. We don't want to take that chance. And we're essentially providing, we're getting little money. And we're providing services as an incentive to these people. There'd be police, fire, lights, the whole bit, just to have a place for us to preserve our future. That was the whole idea. And the consensual thing, that's a political question. We just thought there was always some number, always some number.
Anyone else?
May I say?
Can we take a vote on it?
No, no. If I may. And I don't want to be misinterpreted here. I understand the issues of the mature community. I understand the issues that staff is doing. I am on board with all of it, except for point number four, which says, "Non-consensual." However, as far as staff is concerned, with what Slim said, obviously, we have the chance to vote on these later. You know, maybe that's the direction you go. But I don't want to be misinterpreted, that I do understand the issues. I just, again, am caught up on the non-consensual issue. And if you have a chance to vote on it later, again, that may take care of it.
Anyone else? Mr. Fabo, is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah. Is that okay?
All right. That's the last item on the agenda, but we do have a time for discussion of any of the policy initiatives from the Board of Commissioners.
Would you all want to chat about that more at retreat, or?
I'm sorry? The annexation?
Yes.
I would.
Because we want to kind of bring it to closure, one way or the other. And we want to get on it, if you are behind it, you know, start. We've talked to different economic development people, and they kind of concur with some of these areas being good areas. So we want to see if you are for that and we can move forward on some of the education involved.
Thank you, sir. I know it was a lot of work to do there.
I want to thank Mike, Kate, and Gene, and Jeff. We worked on this for a while. And the GIS staff, who, as you see, put together all the per-lot data, which took a little bit of time. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll return at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you for tuning in.